Hello, everybody. Welcome to the July 5th meeting of the Eureka City Council. If we can all take our seat, we can get started. I would like to start today's meeting with a roll call, please.
Mayor Seaman.
Here.
Councilmember Castellano. She's waving. Councilmember Moulton, here. Councilmember Arroyo.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer is absent, and Councilmember Brigal.
Here.
All right. Let everybody please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. And I will say that today I noticed the report out of closed session, but we had no closed session, so there is nothing to be. And so it is time for Mayor's announcements. We did have one proclamation sent in this morning, so it's not on the agenda. But I have asked Councilmember Moulton if she would like to read it, please.
I would be delighted. Thank you. Is there someone here to receive the proclamation in recognition of Disability Pride Month?
Yes, I'm here. I would like to read. Sorry, I've been having text. But I'm here. I can, I can read it if that would, if that works. I appreciate your time.
Oh, we'll read it for you. We're just, we'll, you'll give you a few minutes to talk after we're done.
Yeah, we will present the proclamation.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry.
Elizabeth, thank you. Okay. City of Eureka Proclamation in Recognition of Disability Pride Month, July 2022. Whereas July is the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which was passed by the U.S. Congress on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities. And whereas the ADA prevents discrimination based on disability, requires that employers provide reasonable accommodations, is designed so that the public accommodations meet accessibility requirements, and is recognized as one of the most important civil rights laws in history. And whereas disability is an important part of normal human diversity. And whereas disability pride enables people with disabilities to redefine unique and shared experiences as point of self-worth, serves as a tool to tackle structural changes, bias, and discrimination, and reshapes false negative perceptions in individuals with disabilities as people with value, talents, and significance. And whereas the disability rights movement has a long history in California nationally and internationally. And whereas Disability Pride Month is recognized and celebrated in many other cities, including San Francisco, Denver, Milwaukee, and Brighton. And whereas Eureka's first annual Disability Pride Fest is scheduled for July 23, 2022. And whereas within the city of Eureka, many organizations support and provide advocacy for persons with all different kinds of disabilities as an expression of our commitment to inclusivity and to honoring the needs of every person. And now therefore, I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Seaman and the Eureka City Council, I'd month in Eureka.
Now, would you like to say a few words about it?
Sure. So I am one of the organizers of this year's first annual Disability Pride Fest. And I'm representing Redwood Coast Regional Center as a client advocate. But we're also working with Tri-County Independent Living and Ink People and some other organizations. And Disability Pride Month is a really great opportunity in many areas around the world to really celebrate people with all different kinds of disabilities. And which also means celebrating everyone in our communities, right? And what we can achieve when we come together. Specifically, it celebrates the anniversary of the ADA, which was, you know, a ton of work from all different corners of the U.S. And so I think that Disability Pride Month being recognized in the city of Eureka would really be in line with many other things that the city council is known to support. So again, I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. I hope you have a great first event.
Yes, us too. It's going well so far.
Excellent. Well, thank you for coming, and we'll make sure we get this to you. Councilmember Brigal has something to say.
So is there a flyer available to this event? Or is there someone? What it's all about?
Um, yes, there are flyers. I can share screen in a second. I, it's going out like in the next couple of days to be plastered everywhere. So.
We can find when it will.
I'll look for it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Councilmember Castellano, for bringing this to us. Thank you. We're gonna move on to the next item now, which is just Mayor's Report. I wanted to say that last night I finished a pretty power-packed weekend with Fourth of July weekend at the Aquatic Center with Cal Poly Humboldt, where we actually got to see the fireworks and not just glowing clouds. And it was very exciting, especially given the rain earlier in the day. So it was lovely. I will say that while I, when I was there, Jeff Ramey from our Community Services Department got a big shout out and thank you from Cal Poly. So wanted to make sure that we got that out for him. I want to say that the show was, was really well appreciated and enjoyed by folks, but what has not been appreciated and enjoyed are all the supplemental activities that come with the Fourth of July. Specifically, the weeks before and the weeks after, where we're getting lots of bangs and pops, and I'm getting lots of phone calls and emails. So for those of you who are having problems with that, we do have a place on the EPD webpage on the front of the web, of the EPD site. You could report online. It's very difficult to enforce these. It's hard to find folks. They go out, they do it, they run back in the house. By the time the police get there, we can't find them. But if you report what you see, and you can give us enough information, perhaps they can narrow down on some of the biggest culprits. So I just want everybody to know that that is something that we hear about a lot. And share your frustration. I had a very shivery dog the last week. I began the weekend, not at Friday Night Market, which was very much a disappointment because I was looking forward to it, except I was really happy to spend it at the Access Humboldt Grand College of the Redwoods and had a really lovely and well-attended event. So that was great. I wanted to mention that the Traffic Safety Task Force is now being run by the Humboldt Governments. We had a meeting recently, and we're going to begin producing PSAs that will supplement the Go Slow campaign. And I wanted to mention that we are continuing to have lots of discussions about access to healthcare. And I wanted to send my congratulations to Laura McEwen, who has been the champion for access to healthcare in Humboldt for a very long time and who is retiring. There is not really anybody to fill her shoes at this point, but I am super grateful that the Director of Public Health, Sofia Pereira, has committed to continuing to work on this effort to recruit and, and strengthen our dental healthcare. So good luck to Laura. Thank you to the Department of Health for continuing to work on this really important topic. And with that, I will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. So this is the time where we have three minutes to speak about items that are not on the agenda. If there's anybody in-house who would like to speak, this is the time. I'm sorry. Hold on just a sec. Your microphone's not on. There's a little button.
Button, a light?
Uh, it's on.
It's on?
Uh, hold on just a second. Okay, you can keep speaking. I'm gonna check in back.
Go ahead. Oh, okay. Anyway, we've, we've been protesting the COVID nonsense for two years come August. One sign says, "My Body, My Choice." One woman said, "I couldn't use this sign or the slogan because it was only theirs." The North Coast Journal had an alt, an editorial cartoon showing a scruffy, pot-bellied man with the same slogan, ridiculing the idea that the slogan and the language could be, could not, could be used to protest forced vaccinations. Another of my signs says, "Fear Hitler Stalin Mao." Yeah, we, we made a sign every week, so it's, you know, you gotta come up with something different every time. Otherwise, people don't want to, they get. One guy said, "Who is Mao?" He had never heard of the Chinese dictator who killed over 32 million people and made a law saying that after the first baby, women were forced to have an abortion. Girls were routinely aborted in preference to boys. This is different cultures and everything like that. But, you know, the girls get the, get left out. China now has 36 million guys who can't find a Chinese wife. It's simple logic. If central government has the power to dictate whether you can have an abortion, then it also has the same power to force you to have an abortion, just like in China. Government has lots of popular political reasons. There's climate change, guilt, population explosion, genocide, et cetera. The gullible say it could never happen. But why not? Why can't it happen? Many people already believe we have a democracy ruled by majority vote instead of 50 constitution with limited powers. If the mob majority votes to have forced abortions, central government won't stop them. Thank you.
This is Genevieve Wilson. First of all, I would thank you for Eureka pulled out a lot of music festivals. All the band playing, everybody's so happy, and it's wonderful. We like to dance and all that. And also, I took a foul, okay, in the courthouse. And then they fixed, and Christian and Paul, they, they are speedy response for me. That's wonderful. Because I like anything else on, you know, if something happened to me, I want to warn people, don't get fall, fall down. So I reported, they can fix it. Somehow my heart, my shoe caught it, and I fell, fell down. And then, of course, red, white, and blue on my face, right? Natural facial painting. And then, of course, I said, "Oh, my bone density must be good. I didn't break anything. Thank goodness." So, okay, all right, now go to the subject, say, like abortion. I say, "I'm a feminist too." But hey, we should do like drive with caution, drive and have sex with cautions, so you don't have to hurt your body. Feminist, we don't want anybody cut us to, for that abortion. Anyway, so back to the main subject. Now there are new things coming up, all kind of things, marking pass and all this. And we just have a day for July 72nd for celebrate disabled people. But my point is, all this vaccine, we have lots of disability caused by that. And should be a choice, be somebody believe in it, but don't keep saying a Monday. Hopefully, no Monday coming up. Like I say, oh, all this activity, maybe go out with a bang, you know? Maybe hopefully, nothing come back, like lockdown and all that stuff, you know? Because you have to have love, laugh, so you can live, okay? And then if you don't have freedom, you cannot live. You rather like they say before communism, I'd rather be, be dead than have rad, right? So now we would rather have freedom. Oh, fight for that. My point is, you have a choice. My body, my choice, and everything else. Like people say, "Oh, don't smoke." I say, "Yeah, well, you have your choice, but don't, nobody should have Monday or breathe or anything, you know? If you prefer, it should be an option." And also, I would appreciate people don't have to make people who are not vaccinated get, keep testing. The guy who testing PCR is already say is no use. But and whatever the testing have graphene oxide in it. And people want to work. And I go back to all this Monday. First of all, if a young man have a pericarditis, old people die too. So we all die off. And then you have young people get sterilized. You don't have any, anybody. And then children have to take the vaccine. No, please, parent, don't give it to the children. Thank you. Like I say, I like people be, be healthy. That's why I'm go out there, tell people, no, what's the difference? Appreciate that. And thank you for a speedy response for that. So we won't have nobody fall like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm back. Courtney not here tonight. He's apparently got a job offer ready, and he's about ready to get the hell out of here. And you guys are part of the reason that he doesn't even like this town anymore. I sit here and I watch your guys' faces while people are commenting. And I'm struck by the barely disguised contempt and disdain that you, you generally show, you especially Mayor Seaman. You guys ought to practice admire at home, practice holding a neutral face when people are talking about things that you don't agree with. Because like the captain, the retired police captain that was here last time said, when you're elected to sit in those chairs, you're not elected to bring your biases to those positions. You're elected to represent your constituents. And so when somebody comes down here, it takes a lot of guts. Most people have, most people are so afraid of speaking in public that they can't even think about coming down here. All right, so the few of us that do show up, we're the tip of the iceberg. And when you look at somebody who got the balls to come up here and say what they think, and when you look at them with complete disdain and contempt, you disgust me. You know? Between that and that Hannibal Lecter mask, I mean, every time I come in here, it's cringe-worthy. But beyond that, what I really want to talk about, I had to leave last time before you guys got around to the Big Brother polls. But I watched it later on, on the video. And it just struck me how the city manager, the city attorney, and the police chief apparently all knew what was happening with these things. And all the way up until they were installed, and you guys supposedly had no clue what was going on. If it's true that you had no clue, I think it's extremely underhanded for these three to have pulled that off behind your back, thinking that something like that wouldn't piss people off? I mean, how could you possibly think that that wouldn't be something that would upset people? I mean, beyond the fact that people don't really feel comfortable with surveillance on them all the time, just the fact that. Oh, I didn't see the agenda. I'll come back and say it even stronger, Nick.
Do you have something else you want to talk about?
Oh, lots, 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 but a lot, lot more 37 seconds worth.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment on mine? We're not seeing anyone. All right. I will close public comment, and I will open up item E1, which is Public Hearings, Pearson Properties, General Plan Amendment and Zone Reclassification. And I believe that is Principal Planner Kenyon is gonna make that presentation today. Oh, it is Getz. I was told Kenyon. Sorry.
My apologies.
Let me get my screen share going here.
I thought I said, they said you were gonna be on vacation, so this is a surprise. Yeah. Well, it's not a special treat for her, if she could be on vacation.
All right. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is the Pearson Properties General Plan Amendment and Zone Reclassification. It will change both the land use and zoning designations on a vacant parcel on West Harris Street, located west of the Eureka Mall. Senior Planner Caitlin Castellano is actually managing this project, but she is on vacation, so I'm presenting in her.
Oh.
The site is located on the west side of Eureka, on the bluff, easterly of the Bay Shore Mall, at the northwest corner of West Harris and Fairfield Streets. It's also adjacent to several parcels owned by Pearson Properties, one of which houses their main office. Zooming in even more, the site is west of Fairfield Street, north of West Harris Street, and northwest of Flynn Street. From the street view, the point 21 acre parcel looking northeast from West Harris Street, and then northwest, you can see that the site is relatively flat. The proposed project will change the land use designation from medium-density residential, or MDR, to general commercial, which extends the existing general commercial designated lands to the east by one parcel. The land use change would then require the site be rezoned from residential medium, or R2, to service commercial, or SC. Again, this extends the existing zoning to the east by one parcel. So you may be asking what this change will do for the parcel and for the city. The land use designation and zoning changes will allow for higher density and more types of development. The current MDR R2 designation allows housing density at 22 dwelling units per acre, and the R2 zoning allows very limited commercial uses, such as a daycare facility or a home occupation. Under the current land use and zoning, the lot could support up to five dwelling units and two accessory dwelling units, but generally no commercial office uses. The GS, excuse me, GCSE designations regulate housing density by a maximum floor area ratio instead of by dwelling units per acre, and they allow a variety of commercial uses. This means the proposed GCSE designations could allow up to 10 1,000 square foot dwelling units plus 280Us and a 3,000 square foot office, along with parking if required, and landscaping. And that's just an example of the, the type of development that could be possible on the site. On April 5, 2022, the city council held a public hearing and adopted a resolution approving the petition authorizing the applicant to apply for the general plan amendment and the zone reclassification. On June 13, 2022, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and then adopted a resolution recommending council approve the amendments. Tonight is the first of two city council meetings, and this meeting is a public hearing to receive public testimony. And then staff is recommending you introduce the ordinance to amend the zoning map. At your next meeting on July 19, staff will recommend council adopt the ordinance to amend the zoning map as well as a resolution to approve the general plan map amendment. For tonight, staff is recommending that council receive the report and hold a public hearing. And then, based on the analysis in your staff report, introduce the ordinance to amend the zoning from R2 to SC. And I do have a suggestive motion when you're ready, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Does anybody have any questions for Principal Planner Getz? Councilmember Castellano, is that a little hand? I'm sorry. It was just barely over your name. That was why. We can't hear you. I see your mute's off, but. Oh, your mute's on now. Now it's off. Is it on our end? Oh, do you want to try to leave and come back? Councilmember Castellano, and we'll. Oh, okay. Assistant City Manager Powell, oh, she left to come back. So does anybody else have a question while we're waiting for her? Councilmember Moulton?
I'll fill some airtime. Principal Planner Getz, is there anything that would trigger looking at additional traffic in that particular area that would be caused by increased density?
So with the changes to the land use and zoning designations, residential uses and a number of commercial uses would be principally permitted. So the potential effects from traffic from those types of projects or developments have been analyzed and have been determined that they would not be significant. Conditionally permitted uses for commercial operations could be needed, depending on what type of use it is. And at that point in time, we would definitely look at any potential impacts for traffic.
Thank you. I know it's a, it's a busy and interesting corner. Right around there. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano, are you, are we able to hear you yet? No, you just turned it on mute. How about if Assistant City Manager Powell calls you? We'll do it the old-fashioned way. We could hear.
Hello?
Nice. You're on speaker.
Thanks, everyone. Just a quick question about someone from the public wrote us asking about kind of expanding this zoning change to additional areas. Would that be possible within this kind of cycle? Or would this be something that we would have to bring forward at another time?
The proposal for you this evening is just to change the land use and zoning designation on this particular parcel. If other property owners in the vicinity were interested in having the city look at that, I would encourage them to contact our department, and we could certainly talk with them about that, but it would be under a separate application.
All right. Any other questions? Do we have any? Oh, since questions are asked, I will open the public hearing now. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on this item?
That issue about parking.
This is specifically about parking on the Pearson Properties General Plan?
Excuse me?
It's specifically on the Pearson Property item that we're talking about in that.
That's what I'm talking about. This, this project. I don't know what you think I was talking about. We're talking about, this is talking about just the lot on the corner, right? Okay, well, they're applying to have both lots changed over to the zoning change on both lots, right? Right?
Excuse me?
They're applying to have the zoning changed on both lots, right? So shouldn't they be considered together as far as parking or traffic impact? Because that is, like you said, like it was mentioned, that is a very unusual corner. You're coming up the hill, people are gathering speed coming up the hill to make that bend. Right away, there's a driveway to the Pearson's office. There's the alley, which I'm gonna assume is gonna be access to these two new projects. And then it comes up into a really weird corner. It's a really strange traffic environment. And to consider only one of these zone changes without considering the other, I think would be a big mistake. I mean, because they're both gonna have an effect on the traffic in that, in that place. And it's not a place, it's not a wide-open place where you're gonna have lots of visibility and, you know, lots of room for traffic flow. There's gonna be quite a bit of, I mean. There's gonna be quite a bit, I mean, this, the one you're talking about right now is a tiny little lot. The other one's a pretty good sized lot. And this one by itself probably won't have much impact on traffic, but it would be, I think it would behoove you to consider both of them together instead of separately. I mean, otherwise you'd be derelict in your duties, I would think. You know, I mean, because it's, you know, it's all gonna be one project. Okay.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on this item?
My name is Diane Dobbs, I'm in the property right next to this lot. Uh, I wanna say one thing, I, I, I want, I, I appreciate all of you, I appreciate the work you do. Um, I, like, cities change, if you, if you're worried about what I think about that, I'm just wanna let you know, I actually do think there's, unless a fifty-five foot building is put up, which, uh, Greg and I have talked a bit about what is gonna happen in the near future, um, I actually think there can be some benefit to my property. We hear a lot of noise, traffic noise, coming up Harris up until ten o'clock at night, and I actually think that's gonna block that some. Um, because like my back unit, which I've lived in before, um, you don't hear traffic as much as you do in my front unit, right? And so I even think having a building there is gonna actually help. And I actually think for my sake, it's gonna help the privacy issue that I have on that corner piece, because people walk through that lot a lot, right? And it, and it, it scares my tenants, right now I'm living in one unit and I have a tenant in the other, but should I move out and have two tenants, like it makes them nervous when people walk through there, and I think that's gonna reduce that, having, um, a piece of property there, I mean, a building happening there. Uh, Mr. Pearson and I are working on a, a fence between the two properties that will, we're gonna raise my fence, take out my fence and raise it and, um, uh, make it a, an attractive, durable, low maintenance fence, so that we're, we can both be happy with it, and then I, that allows me to do some landscaping, you know, and I actually think it's gonna make more privacy for my tenants and less noise. The only thing I'm nervous about is if in the future, I know right now he's just planning on, what I understand is he's planning on moving his office over there. Um, if a fifty-five foot, because I know you can go up to that high according to the tables in the, in the whole report, um, that scares me a bit. If something in the future ever went that high, that would kind of, I don't know, I, I might put in for, for a same kind of petition and put some, who knows? Okay, I just wanted to just let you know that I'm not like angry about this and that, like, you don't have negative feelings, at least on, on, from my part, so, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Wilson. Aside from the traffic problems that you'll run into, I, what I see on, in Eureka is that if you try to increase the density of Eureka in order to increase the population of Eureka, you're gonna run into, uh, a lot of problems. The state already has, uh, essentially confiscated a lot of the usefulness of the rental properties. I know from my situation, I tried to help out a guy, say, let him do some simple painting, he said he was a professional journeyman contractor painter. Well, I painted my mother's house when I was eight years old, it was whitewash, you know, white on white, no big deal. But the thing is, essentially, once we got him situated, and he was in Eureka, we, I, we live in Fortuna, okay, so the thing is, we, uh, I, I helped him, I didn't wanna have him have to drive his bicycle, he didn't do anything for four months, okay, so we're trying to help the guy. But the thing is, he gets in there, he wants to put his milk, uh, do we have a place to put his milk? Okay, so we let him use our refrigerator in our house that we had. Oh.
Can we keep this to the topic at hand?
Pardon?
Can we keep this to the topic at hand, which is the?
Well, I'm getting to that, which is essentially is that the, a lot of your housing supply is being, uh, eliminated by the state. Just like when you, like this fellow I'm try-trying to tell you about. As soon as he got in there one week, he said, "This house is mine." Took me ten months to get rid of him, he didn't pay a single thing, he was paying five, he, we paid the utilities five hundred dollars a month and all this kind of stuff, but this is what you, you get this fear of renting to anybody. And so you reduce the housing supply because of the state regulations. Now, here you're trying to increase the availability of housing, I assume, but the thing is, it's, it, it's, it's not gonna work because, uh, you're still gonna have all these other problems. Anyway, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak about the Zone Reclassification?
Mayor Council, excuse me, um, yeah, I'm, I'm Greg Pearson, and, uh, it's my project that we're talking about. And to address the gentleman's first, um, the first speaker, um, the larger parcel that was shown on the screen is not going through a rezone whatsoever, uh, by me, at least. Yeah, they were just showing proximity to another project, or, you know? Yeah, no, it's, the only one we're looking at is a small little, the smaller parcel. No. No, that's, that's not going through a zone change. Yeah, you're probably.
Mr. Pearson?
Yeah.
So, I apologize, because this is a public hearing, if you could just talk into the microphone and?
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
So, the larger parcel that was shown on the screen
Thank you.
um, is not going through a zone change, it's not part of this process, it's just the smaller one, so, um, he's either thinking of something else, or, um, just didn't, uh, understand the, the process that we're going through tonight. Okay?
Thank you very much. All right, any other comment? Not, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion or further discussion. Councilmember Molton?
I did just wanna make a comment, um, or to just ask nicely. I know that there's a setback in the zoning already, just to be, just for Mr. Pearson, just to be aware that that is a really challenging corner, and that uh, any landscaping or anything that would block that sightline would make things more challenging, uh, and dangerous around there. I'm sure that's already part of your thought process, thank you. Um, but I'd like to go ahead and make a motion uh, to, I'd like to move that we, uh, waive reading, read by title only, and introduce Bill Number one zero one three dash CS, an ordinance of the City Council amending the inland zoning map by the property at the northwest corner of Fairfield and West Harris Streets, APN, uh, zero zero eight dash zero five two dash zero one one, from Residential Medium, R2, to Service Commercial, SC.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I do have a comment on it, um, I just wanted to, um, note, I, I think it's a fair point that the city should be considering, um, extensive development in an area. There are two different processes, as, uh, Mr. Pearson indicated, and, and as we're, you know, we're talking about this property tonight, which is, um, intended to, you know, remain with, in the ownership of, of, um, of its current owner, and be developed, um, according to, to that person's wishes, but, um, the, um, the, you know, the adjacent property that the city plans to, um, hopefully proceed with developing, um, you know, we'll be looking at, uh, the impacts of, of the development of that parcel separately, so, um, it is a fair point that we should be considering, um, impacts to the neighborhood of extensive development, um, but, you know, I think, uh, we, we have to consider these separately um, and judge this on its own merits, so. I'm supportive of moving forward with it, and I just wanted to express appreciation that there's been some really, um, good neighborly cooperation to figure out what, what needs to happen, um, with privacy and fencing and all those things, and I'm really happy to see that, and, um, think it is a good model for this kind of development in the future, because often when we see proposals for development, um, on one property, neighbors, um, don't, don't care for it, so it's great to see that that's taking place, thank you for that.
All right, any other discussion, or are we ready to vote? Let's vote.
Councilmember Castellano? Four yes votes, Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
All right. We'll move on to Item E2, and I see Senior Planning, uh, Senior Planner Topoluski is ready to go to talk about text and local coastal program amendments for cannabis.
Um, so just, yeah, escape and go into shared screen. We're having trouble with this computer. So where's your PowerPoint? And and then do okay, so Councilmember Castellano's not gonna be able to see this, but everybody in here will. So just be cognizant of that when you're talking.
So just start at like a normal PowerPoint?
Yeah, just go there.
I'm on, okay.
Just, I gotta check something else.
All right.
So, okay. Yeah, we're good.
Do you want me to share the screen here?
Um, nah, yeah, that might, that would, if we could show the screen, that might help. Go ahead, and. Screen. Where are we, right there?
I think everyone can see now.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're ready. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk, uh, the Cannabis Code update tonight. Also affectionately known as Bills Number Ten Fifteen and Ten Sixteen. Uh, I'll give you a, a quick overview of what we're gonna talk about tonight. I'm gonna start with a brief background of the program and its history. Uh, we're gonna talk about proposed changes to the Cannabis Code, which include, uh, license types that we're gonna streamline, and fee reductions. Cannabis uses expanded to additional zoning designations, uh, additional enforcement tools, cannabis events. And last, we'll, we'll talk about, uh, a recommendation the Planning Commission had when they approved, uh, the code update. So jumping in to, uh, a brief background here of the program. Uh, the program started in twenty sixteen. Uh, it's been a successful program that threads together staff from police, fire, building, code enforcement, and others, uh, also known as the Cannabis Review Panel. Um, to date, we have about forty-three businesses, um, and we have about eighty licenses, some of the businesses have multiple licenses, and we're employing about two hundred and sixty people. Uh, the cannabis program has generated approximately one point four million since its inception. And the program has resulted in an increased inventory of turnkey facilities. Uh, as our program has progressed, we've noticed areas for improvement. Um, one of those is streamlining our permit types based on a similarity of uses, uh, or impacts. Um, we also want to expand cannabis uses to other similar zoning designations, uh, further the enforcement tools, and create a path forward for cannabis events. So, our first area of focus, uh, for the code update was streamlining our cannabis permit types, uh, from thirteen currently down to three permit types. Uh, the first and most common type would be our general cannabis permit that we're proposing. Uh, this would include uses like cultivation, distribution, transportation, a non-volatile manufacturing and testing. Uh, these are all uses that are similar to one another in regards to permitting and monitoring, so we felt that they logically, uh, could be grouped together. Uh, the next permit type of the three we're proposing would be the retail cannabis permit. Um, so we're proposing, um, as council recommended some time ago, to, uh, resume accepting, uh, dispensary or retail applications. Um, we're gonna pull the cap off, um, and there will be no more RFP process, which we had similar, or before. And the final type of the three proposed new, uh, license or permit types would be a chemical extraction permit. And these were, uh, singled out because they require additional attention, um, due to their potential volatility. And, uh, we're adjusted the fee schedule, which, um, I guess is on the agenda for later tonight, so. Uh, but, to summarize, the, the general cannabis license fee will now be three thousand dollars a year. The retail will be four thousand a year, and the chemical will be five thousand. And like, for example, the general cannabis permit type, currently cultivation, if you have, uh, over five thousand square feet, it's eighty-five hundred a year, and if you have five thousand or less, it's five thousand. Uh, currently distribution is sixty-five hundred. Non-volatile is about seven thousand. Um, so with a, one general cannabis permit type at three thousand, you could do all, all of those together, so. There's potential for, um, a lot of, um, fee reduction to help out struggling economies, uh, which I'm sure we all know too well. So our next area of interest for the Cannabis Code update is the expansion of cannabis uses to addition in districts. We're seeking to allow for similar zoning districts to have similar cannabis uses. For some reason, when we went through the original code in twenty sixteen, zoning designations that are very similar, uh, some of them were left out. So we've, uh, we're seeking to, uh, fix that problem. Um, it affects both the inland and coastal zones. So with that, I have, um, two tables that show the current, this is the inland zone, basically currently, uh, districts where cannabis is allowed in some regard, or where it's gonna be proposed to be allowed. So for example, you can see, uh, in downtown, um, which is very similar to downtown west. Uh, you know, if you walked across the boundary, you probably couldn't tell you're going from one zone to another, but, uh, in twenty sixteen, we left out, uh, downtown, and so we're proposing to, to bring it up to speed here. Um, and then, we can come back to this, uh, later if you guys would like, but for the coastal zone, um, we're doing some similar stuff, um, going into areas that, uh, currently cannabis is allowed, uh, or it's very similar to to places where cannabis is currently allowed, so we're trying to expand into those like zones. And I just wanted to point out, there is one error on this, uh, for the ML column under current, it actually is, uh, everything is allowed currently in our, our industrial zone, ML zone, so. That was a miscue. Our next area of expansion, um, for code update is expansion of enforcement tools. So currently, um, the only options are to suspend or revoke licenses, which is kind of heavy-handed, so we wanted to sprinkle in some other options. So some of the new enforcement tools include options, uh, such as notices of violation, administrative citations, uh, and other options leading up to the final suspension or revocation. Um, and we also are including language for cannabis events. Events with cannabis consumption, sales would be allowed on the premises of a licensed commercial cannabis use on private property that isn't licensed, but isn't in a residential zoning district, and within city facilities or other public property in any zoning district. A cannabis event would require the approval of a temporary cannabis event permit. Um, it would require state approval through the California Department of Cannabis Control. And if outdoors on a city street or other public property, uh, a, a temporary cannabis event would also require a city-approved special event permit. Um, there will be, it will be twenty-one and order for temporary cannabis events. Um, there will be, it will be twenty-one and order for temporary cannabis events. Um, or if they're gonna be co-located with a special event, they'll have, uh, strictly enforced areas for sales and consumption. And, uh, you may have seen these popping up more often now. There was one a couple weeks ago down in Southern Humboldt where, um, you can basically have a cannabis event that is co-located with a special event or a festival and, uh, the state has really strict guidelines on how to, uh, regulate those and, and keep them separate. Uh, the maximum duration of a temporary cannabis event would be four consecutive days and no more than six temporary cannabis event permits would be issued for the same location per calendar year. And all temporary cannabis events would need to be approved by the city manager. Um, okay, now a little history about, uh, when we brought the code update through the Planning Commission. Um, at the three fourteen, or May four, March fourteenth, Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended that we staff have a working group with two of the, the commissioners, so Commissioner Kraft and Commissioner Lazar. We, uh, worked together with our Cannabis Review Panel and other appropriate staff. Um, and we brought back the item to the May ninth meeting, um, where the item was approved, but the commission wanted to add, uh, a recommendation, and I'll read that to you. Uh, the Planning Commission recommends the city council direct staff to include provisions authorizing the creation of an infusion license type to be allowed wherever cottage licenses are currently permitted, including in residential zoning districts. Um, and we had, uh, some discussions with the State Department of Cannabis Control and they say that currently, cannabis activities are not allowed in residential zones. Uh, and staff, after the, a result of our working group, uh, does not recommend it either, so. With that, we can have a little discussion.
All right, does anybody have questions? Okay, and councilmember Moulton, then councilmember Arroyo.
Um, I just am curious about at the events, the cannabis use and special event separation. I know I've planned many events with a beer garden and if you wanna have, you have to either have a beer jail or you have to have like the whole place fenced off and then controls, but you can, like, you know, mix the, people can walk around with a beer, you know, even in the kids' zone and things like that. Is it different for cannabis events?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's, it's very different. Um, the state requires it to be completely separate, including visibility. Um, so the standards kind of call for putting the cannabis way out in left field. Whereas, I'm sure you've seen it events, the beer gardens are more kind of, uh, laissez-faire, you know, you can come and go and, and kids can be hanging out, but for cannabis, uh, you need to be strictly separated and no visibility. Um, like, I've been in discussions with the City of Santa Rosa, they've done stuff at their fairgrounds, they used to have the Emerald Cup there. And they had alcohol and cannabis sales, that's, they have to be very strictly separated, the two. And, um, whereas can, or with alcohol, um, there's a little more lax, uh, behavior where you can walk around with a, a beverage. Um, cannabis is, is at this point very strict and, um, they used a color coding system at, at Santa Rosa Fairgrounds where, you know, they had like a orange for cannabis and a blue for alcohol and you had to kind of stay in your zones, so. Um, yeah, at this point, it's slowly being normalized, but, uh, they're still, at the state level, they're recommending very strict cannabis, uh, separation, so.
Thank you for that clarification. I can appreciate that as you can't get drunk on someone else's beer walking too close to them.
Right, right.
Councilmember Arroyo.
I guess I'm ruminating on this infusion question. I, I can understand why we wouldn't allow, um, you know, like, home, home infusing of cannabis products that were then for retail sale. Um, but it makes me wonder, um, and I'm sure since you had a working group, you explored a lot of alternatives. Um, did you look at the kind of commercial kitchen-type model essentially, like, the license having multiple home makers, cottage makers of infused products go to one location? Is there some kind of model like that that could work?
You know, and, uh, what a lot of folks maybe don't understand about our, um, our licenses, our, uh, we allow people to share if someone holds a license, um, you know, for distribution or manufacturing. They can work with, uh, rural farmers, small farmers that, you know, can't afford their own spots and locations because a lot of money goes into security and things of that nature. Um, so there is potential for folks to, yeah, if somebody had a commercial kitchen, we have no problem as long as they're following, you know, the state's guidelines, track and track. Coming from a legal farm, they can come in there, use their facilities. Um, one of the stick, one of the things that makes our program successful, uh, that, that we feel, our, our review panel is that, uh, you can, uh, sorry, I just had a little brain fart. Um, what was I gonna say? You can, uh, I'm sorry.
You can come back to it, it's fine. Yeah, I have, I have another question locked and loaded.
Oh, I was gonna say that, um, you know, but getting back to the security issue and the improvements that we require, um, it's not exactly cheap to do it, so one of the points we were bringing up with Commissioner Lazar and Kraft was that, uh, you're gonna have to spend a lot of money to, to bring your residence, if you wanted to do it in a residence, even if we did consider residential neighborhoods. And that, uh, you know, spend a lot of money to improve your facility. And realistically, we just don't see a lot of people would want to do that because by, at the end of the day, you might as well have a brick and mortar place and a more appropriate zoning designation, so.
So if people were to reach out to ask, like, how can I infuse products, uh, and, and sell them? They, they might be directed to contact existing license holders or to ask around with existing license holders?
To me, I mean, I, I, uh, yeah, I help people daily if they call up and, you know, uh, because there's a lot of folks that are kind of struggling with their facilities, maybe they bit off a little more than they could chew. Times are tough, so if they can look to share their costs, uh, you know, we're trying to help businesses stay afloat, so.
Okay, and if they already were previously licensed under one of our license types that would be going away, they would just be automatically put into the new category?
Right, right, yeah, they're gonna finish out their year, it's a yearly process, so there's a date on each license. Come in to renew, they'll be pleasantly surprised.
Great. Um, I think that's all I had for now, but I'll, I'll come back to another one in a minute.
All right, anybody else have any questions? All right, councilmember Moulton.
Uh, going back to events just for a moment, you said that the, all cannabis events would need to be approved. Um, is that ordinary practice for other sort of large-scale things in the city?
That would be the ultimate, you know, the, the final say would be, it's very similar to special event permits. Currently, right now, special event permits go to, kind of like the, the cannabis group that, uh, senior planner Topoluski is talking about, but it goes to a group of staff members that may have some responsibilities or, you know, it goes to traffic, it goes to police, it goes to all these people, they approve it first and then I finalize the, the, the approval after those other departments have reviewed it.
Is there anything else in the city that has to go through such a rigorous situation?
Special event permits.
Just all special event permits?
All special event permits go through that, yeah.
So this isn't out of the ordinary?
No, it'll be a different group of, 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 of staff members that review beforehand, but no, it's no different.
And filming permits would go through, they also go through a process where the city manager approves?
Oh, that's interesting, thank you. Okay, that answers my question, thanks.
All right, councilmember Arroyo.
I find myself coming back to this every time we talk about cannabis, uh, and, or having a facility where people use onsite. Um, and I think it's challenging with bars for people, you know, bars vary in their willingness to cut someone off or to take their keys or, uh, but I'm wondering, you know, if there's a set of best practices for like bud tenders or, um, for these, especially for temporary events, I just, I guess I, I would like to find ways to avoid people driving while inebriated. Um, any, are there any best practices that you've encountered when you've been looking at how other venues do this?
Yeah, specifically with onsite consumption, we, we do provide them with a, like a three-page document that, uh, lays out, um, what we're expecting them to educate folks with. And, um, that calls out some documents that need to be posted on the facility that get to the heart of what you're saying, basically, um. Right, yeah, there's a, there's definitely, I, I don't have that document with me, I wish I did, I could read some of the good stuff to you, but, um, I think it's also evolving too, um, uh, because there aren't, down to the, the fine details that you would kind of hope to have at this point, but, um, we did our best back in twenty, I think the onsite consumption document got put together in like twenty eighteen. Um, but we do keep in touch with the state and they reach out to us to, to do, um, kind of peer-to-peer trainings. Um, because we can actually learn stuff from, they learn from us, uh, because they're kind of out of the area, so they rely on us, uh, for permitting and, and for making sure a facility is up to speed. Uh, but we rely on them for like the forward-thinking documents and, uh, big picture things like you're talking about, so.
Okay, thank you, yeah, just, I know it's kind of a running joke in Humboldt, but, you know, if a person's a really bad driver, they must be high, but I do how, how much that will proliferate as we see more of these events. Um, and then when it comes to how they really get rid of odors for outdoor events, um, the only facility that I think has outdoor consumption here now is the Up and Barclay facility in the old Kmart. Um, so, are there, I, I don't see specific guidance, it just says it shan't smell. How do people do that effectively?
Yeah, that's, uh, you know, we just recently permitted our second onsite consumption lounge down in Old Town. Um, but, uh, it's an indoor one and they have a really beautiful state-of-the-art. Uh, I guess they, they worked with some casino folks that are really masters at circulating air, but, um, you know, we, we've never done an event with cannabis consumption where it's outside. Um, so we're gonna have to kind of, uh, be kind of touch and go here. Uh, what I'm seeing from other locations is they're just, they're letting folks, you know, consume outside in their area. Um, so I don't know how that's gonna, gonna work out. Um, but as far as like, uh, onsite consumption, we don't really have standards for odor elimination, it's more of a complaint-driven. So, we tell people right off the bat, if we, if we get complaints from your neighbor, we're coming out and, you know, you're gonna have to do some improvements. So I'm imagining with the events, it'll probably start out something like that and then, uh, if people really, if, if it's a problem, you know, we, maybe we can make some kind of tent or, uh, you know, some facility where they can, uh, you know, capture that and, uh, not allow it to flow. I don't know, um, then you look at places like Halverson Park where it could probably work, because it's windy down there most of the time and, um, so I think we're just gonna have to, to be ready to tackle that issue if it pops up.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure if they're like really big fans that were the norm, or something. I know with the indoor spaces, they just do a lot of filtration, but, um, yeah, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I was already thinking about, uh, maybe investing as a city, maybe investing in some kind of equipment that could be rented out if, if this ends up being something that is a popular item, so.
That's thoughtful, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Castellano.
Okay, uh, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yeah, um, so, uh, thank you for this, uh, report. Um, I, I have a quick question about, you know, removing the cap, um, I'm not, not really opposed to it, but I'm just curious if any businesses have reached out to you with concern? You know, I, I know we all kind of recently saw the press about one of the cannabis businesses closing. Um, is, you know, is there some concern that there's gonna be sort of a big influx in of businesses and then, um, that will sort of lead to a lot of upheaval or do folks seem pretty on board with this?
You know, I haven't had anyone reach out in a negative fashion, um, not that that doesn't exist, I'm sure, you know, if, if you had a cannabis business and, and, you know, it might be human nature, you would want to limit the other cannabis businesses, but on the other side, I've had tremendous, uh, positive responses from small businesses that, um, realize that that final markup from a distribution to a retail facility, uh, you know, can be huge for a struggling business, so I've had a lot of good feedback, um, in that regard. But I haven't had, I haven't heard from anyone, you know, um, encouraging the cap to continue.
Was that it? Councilmember Castellano? All right, any other questions? All right, I will open up this public hearing then. Does anybody have a comment on the text and local coastal program amendments for cannabis? Anybody online? Seeing then, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for, um, a motion or discussion. Councilmember Arroyo.
Just a point of discussion or comment really, um, I have heard from a few people that they're concerned about the cap going away or that there not being any vetting process. Um, I think there are some large, uh, larger chains, so to speak, um, dispensary chains that are interested or exploring the area and there's concern from some of the smaller retail establishments. Um, that said, early on in this process, I remember there being a very distinct request that we allow the market to decide. And, um, this, you know, seems like we're following that trajectory. Um, I don't particularly feel one way or another, but, um, I wanted to raise that in case there, we want, you know, we wanted to con- consider continuing. Um, you know, I don't think that we can favor businesses based in Humboldt exclusively. I don't think that, um, that's, you know, fair process, but, um, you know, continuing to have a cap or have, um, a review process would uh, potentially allow some locals to shine more or something like that. Um, I'm surprised there's not folks from the cannabis community here to talk about that, because I, I thought it was gonna be a big thing. So maybe the, the potential competitors have, have decided not to move up here or maybe, um, it's just like, well, let, let it all shake out in the end, I don't know. But I did hear concern about it, um, when we were first, uh, considering these changes a couple months ago.
Any other comments or a motion?
I have a, sorry, I have a quick follow-up question.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, ju- just since the, the cap was kind of, uh, brought up and thank you, councilmember Arroyo, um, is this something, you know, were we to experience a big influx of business, businesses and we were to see a lot of kind of churn within the industry and concern, is this something that we could kind of bring forward again? Um, you know, if businesses started approaching us about this?
Definitely, yeah, I think, uh, you know, right now, maybe we're not hearing, uh, much of comment because maybe the cannabis industry is kind of, uh, taking a hit right now, but, uh, if we noticed an influx and if, if Council wanted to come back with a a cap in the future, that's definitely something that we could take your lead on.
All right, it's in your hands, guys.
All right, I'll do it. We, we do have to read the whole thing. Yes, okay. Uh, I made that we waive full reading, read by title only and introduce bill number ten fifteen, tax CS. Council, amending the text of Title Fifteen, chapters one fifty-five and one fifty-eight, updating the City of Eureka Cannabis Ordinance and waive full reading and read by title only. Ten sixteen, tax CS and ordinance of the City Council, amending the text and local coastal program consistent with the objectives of Title Ten, Chapter Five, regarding updates to the City of Eureka Cannabis Ordinance.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? We all ready to vote? I think everybody pushed a button, so I think everybody's voted. Go ahead.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
Alrighty. Next item, E three, is another public hearing, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fee schedule, and for that, we will be hearing from Director Millar.
All right, good evening, I'm here to present the twenty-two, twenty-three uh fee schedule for the City of Eureka. Uh, so every, at the beginning of every fiscal year, uh, we bring forward the fee schedule for, you know, the purpose of adding or removing fees, for the purpose of changing the fee structure or to adjust prices uh to make sure that we are recovering the costs of providing those services. Uh, every department has a set of fees, um, they're the ones responsible for updating their own fees. So that's what I have, if you have any questions about the changes, um, I can answer what's relevant to finance, but you might have to call on other directors for changes within their department's fees.
All right, Councilmember Royal.
I noticed in the last presentation that we talked about a city fee for temporary schedule. But it's not noted in the staff report, I just, I admittedly just thought of it in the last presentation, so I'm not sure if that's included.
Don't believe it is.
What are we gonna charge? Should we just say, come up with it right now? I'm just, I'm kidding. It, it's something we could consider adding if we need to?
Yeah, it will be something we can consider adding, if we need to come back to adjust the fee schedule again, we'll come back and do so.
Okay, so we're not gonna add it now? Okay.
Can have staff work on um kind of estimating how much time would be required and then we can base the fee off uh those hours, I guess.
Yeah, I, I will say that, you know, for special event permits, um, they are free. So depending on the staff time, it, it may be that we don't need a fee um for cannabis events because there are special events that we put a lot of staff time into, but we do it as a courtesy for the community.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Castellano, I can't see you, so if you have them, just yell out. Alrighty. Um, in that case, I will open up the public hearing and ask, is there anybody here with uh to speak on this item in particular? Seeing none, uh, I will ask, is there anybody online who wishes to speak on it?
I'm not seeing any members who wish to speak.
All right, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion or uh discussion. Go ahead.
I feel so alone over here.
I know.
So I move that we adopt the attached resolution in the City Council of the City of Eureka.
Do I have a second? Right on. Any more discussion? We all ready to vote? Let's vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
All right, now we are ready to move on to the consent calendar. Did anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar? I've not heard of anything. All right, do I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you, um, please vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
All right, we are moving on to legislative action correspondence, I've not heard of anything, does anybody have anything that needs to go in? All right, we will move on to ordinances and resolutions, and for this, we have City Attorney Luna who's gonna update us or talk to us about uh security camera use policy.
Uh, Mayor, I'm so sorry, but could I request just a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Just a real quick break, thank you.
Alrighty, we'll take a five-minute break. We all ready to start again? Okay, so we are gonna come back to ordinances and this time, we're gonna let um City Attorney Luna talk to us about security camera use policy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so last meeting, we had a robust conversation about the security camera use policy that was introduced at that last meeting. Staff took comments and suggestions from the council and you can see those reflected in this updated policy, everything in red has been added in response to those comments. Nothing else was added, so I am happy to take questions from council about those additions.
Does anybody have any questions for City Attorney Luna? All right. In that case, I will go ahead and open this up to, to public comment. Do we have anybody who'd like to make a comment on this?
Hi there, this is Solomon Iverta from Eureka Books, I'd like to comment, good.
Um, okay, go uh we have somebody in, inside who's gonna do one, Solomon, and then we will get you right after that, okay?
Sure, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, well, I don't have a copy, so I can't see where you changed, but uh I know Scott Bauer uh mentioned last time uh suggested that uh we come back in a year with some numbers um justifying this whole project. In my mind, that's something that kind of like should have been done first. And uh, and when you all found out that it hadn't been done and this whole thing had been done in, in an underhanded way like it was, probably the best thing you all should have done is just shut the thing down and then get the numbers and start fresh. However, that being said, I'm kind of curious as to what the numbers are, I mean, how did you guys justify this? Police chief last time mentioned lots of calls in those areas. The thing about it is, is you go to jail for very few things nowadays. You could have sixty calls a week to one place and if no one goes to jail for it, and if, and if there's, and nobody is criminally prosecuted, then what's the point of spending a hundred thousand dollars on a camera to watch them do something that they're not gonna get punished for? I just don't see the justification, I don't know if you're hoping to maybe catch somebody do a, you know, commit a murder, murder right in the parking lot or something in sometime in the future of it. But uh, right now, like I said, even if there's sixty calls a week for minor things, you know, in one place, if nobody gets prosecuted, what's the point of spending a hundred thousand dollars to record it? I just don't see the justification. And uh, I'd, I'd like, I, that's the main thing, I, there's a lot of people that are upset about this, most of them won't come down here because like I said before, most people don't, you know, they're scared to speak in public and you know, the other reason is that most people feel like it doesn't matter that y'all won't listen to them. But uh, there's a lot of us that would really like to see some justification for this, and not in a year, we'd like to see it in black and white before this moves any, any farther. I mean, beside, and the other thing is, here we are in our beautiful Victorian seaport, we've got all kinds of building codes and whatnot regulating, you know, basically the, the appearance of uh our buildings and streets and everything. And you guys put up these monstrosities right in our most beautiful places. There's a, there's a telephone pole right next to the one down there at Hillficker. I mean, those cameras could have been mounted on that pole, that pole's already there without some god-awful-looking industrial galvanized steel tower with, you know, I mean, it's just, it's beyond me how this even could have been conceived to have been something that would be acceptable to the public. As far as I'm concerned, you should scratch the whole thing, start over, but uh, that's what I would say about it.
Thank you very much. All right, Solomon.
Hi there, my name's Solomon Iverta, I'm the, work, live in Eureka and I own Eureka Books, which is right on the gazebo where I think one of these poles is gonna be implemented theoretically. I um apologize, I was not available for the last meeting to give comments at the time and I've been very busy because we were getting ready for Fourth of July, which was great, and it was super to see people from all around the world come into Eureka and downtown uh in Old Town to uh celebrate the Fourth of July. And um I have not spoken to anybody that has been uh sees this project in a favorable light and I myself am opposed to it in any format that you might bring it forward. I don't think these modifications are going to um do anything to, to uh improve the program to the extent that it will not have the problems that are inherent in a surveillance pole being established uh right in the middle of our main busiest tourist area. So I would urge all the council members to please just uh vote no on this and if you want to come back and look at it later, as the previous gentleman just said, and see some actual data to how you can justify this thing, I'd be open to check that out, but I think it's a big lift to show how this might be a beneficial thing to install anywhere in town, but especially in somewhere where uh tourists might be walking around and see signs saying, you are now being under surveillance and uh just so you're aware, that's not an improvement, that's actually making it worse. So um please, uh council, please vote no on this and uh pass it on, we'll talk about it later maybe. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Do we have other comments online? All right, I will close public comment then and bring it back to council. Councilmember Bregel.
I just have a quick, quick clarification, so my understanding is these are security cameras? Is there a difference between security cameras and surveillance cameras? Is that something? Is that a thing?
I don't know that there's a, a technical legal difference between the two, a security camera. We didn't define here, but we put in a scope to tell the public about which types of cameras we're talking about, what, what the scope is here. I would say that surveillance brings to mind uh, you know, twenty-four-hour watching and recording, which we're not doing here. So maybe that's a difference in a in a societal sense, but not in a legal sense.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, so surveillance, because when I hear surveillance, I hear the same thing, it's, you know, people watching. As opposed to a security camera where whether it's legal or not, it's um whether the definition is legal or not, a security camera seems to me to be something more you visit if there is a situation.
Yeah, I think, I think to be careful, the thing to do is to read the actual policy and know what the city is and isn't doing with the data that's being collected and also what data is being collected. That's more important, I think, than the terms, security camera versus surveillance camera.
I do agree with that, it's just an interesting, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Royal?
I do see one um change that we talked about that wasn't reflected in the update. In item five, under data collection, we talked about this says the securities, the city's security cameras do not have facial recognition or license plate reading capability and talked about, based on some public feedback, um, saying they will not utilize facial recognition or license plate reading capability. So I wanted to inquire about that, was that something that staff would like to recommend that we keep in or was it just um? Yeah, any thoughts on that?
I'm happy to comment on that. At the end of this uh policy, I've lost my copy of it because I've given it to a member of the public, but I think it's eleven C. I have put in that any additional data collection or use or sharing will come back to council for further discussion any expansion of that use or collection. And that's what I opted for in this case, rather than saying the word never. And I had several reasons for that. Namely, I think the term never suggests to people that this policy can't be changed and that's not true. So I thought it was better and I, I hope that the council agrees, although of course you're free to not agree with me that I was perhaps more honest to say that further public discussion and, and vote will be had if there's additional use or sharing or collection in the future.
I know when I think about license plate reading, it strikes me differently than facial recognition, maybe that's just a gut reaction part, um, it really isn't. Yeah, uh, license plate reading seems very uh common and um based on your sort of public agreement to use the roadways as prescribed and you license a car to, to do so. I think I, I have different feelings about the facial recognition component um and can see how people would see that as a bit too far, but um I know all of those can be useful tools, it just um, it kind of gives me the gives me that ick factor in a different way, but the license plate reading, I personally don't have any problem with saying that, but there are certain circumstances where I think that could be used effectively, so anyway. Um, I know that was a public comment that we all kind of jived with, so just wanted to bring that up.
Are you looking in the wrong area? Are you looking at five?
The very, so it, it was in section five, but then um I believe we're talking about how any expanded use would have to come back to us so that if there was anything you know, that, yeah, the, the public commenter last time recommended that section five data collection, that last sentence say that we will not use those capabilities, um, but I, I'm comfortable with the explanation that you gave about um bringing it back if there are any changes that are substantive.
Yeah, and I, I think what City Attorney Luna was expressing is that, you know, we could put never in there and it would be a little bit disingenuous, similar to like we had a cap in our ordinance for cannabis, we came back and changed that. We could put never in there now and there's always a chance that another council could come by and want to change that and these ordinances and policies can be amended and I think that's important to know.
All right, any other questions or uh comments or does somebody want to make a motion? Councilmember Castellano?
Um, I have some comments, let's see, um well, firstly, you know, thank you Attorney, City Attorney Luna for, you know, your work with this and for your transparency and, and why you didn't put never. And yeah, sorry, I had a question, if I said that correctly, you know, and yeah, that's in some ways exactly one of my concerns with, with kind of the question of, oh, what are we opening the door into and toward? Because we know that technology is coming, you know, and, and we know that you know, I, I feel that this takes, you know, we're embarking down a road that to me leads to problematic consequences ultimately. You know, I do understand that there's, you know, a concern from staff of, you know, problem areas and I, and I think I could support like temporary uses, you know, like, oh, like, like the, the temporary ones that have been used in the past where, okay, there's a problem area, you put you know, maybe it's, maybe it's a traffic area, et cetera, you know, you, you place a camera there so you can understand the problem and then you move it on afterward. I think that for me, there's a real line crossed when it becomes a permanent installation. I do think it will, whether we want it to or not, limit freedom of speech. You know, I think it is a deterrent, you know, but it's, it's also a deterrent to things that we don't want to deter, you know, and I, and I think as a society, we have to really think about overly the, the consequences of trying to sort of take away the things we don't want or, or take away the risk of things we don't want. And I think that it's that question of risk that, that comes to mind. And, and in order to, you know, like what kinds of beauty will we lose? And that's something that I'm, I'm not willing to move forward with. I also think that business owners can get cameras already, you know, through our SEP TED program that they can use for their own kind of crime prevention through environmental design. So, you know, I, I just think that this is too, you know, I guess I stop and I think to myself, this isn't, this isn't the Eureka, the direction of Eureka that I want Eureka to go.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Royal.
I can very much appreciate that perspective. And when I think about where we're talking about, I think about our Old Town and downtown where we have a lot of calls for service and a lot of concerns from some folks who spend a lot of time there, whether they live there or work there. But I also see that those are gathering spaces that are really valuable to the community and I about that. And then I think about like our, our trails and open spaces that are much less frequented. People and there's a lot fewer eyes there at certain times of day and under certain circumstances. And I know as a regular trail user of the Hikshari, for example, that I've felt appreciative of the what feels like additional almost accountability for actions in those, in those spaces. So I'm not sure, I think I am basing some of this on, on my personal feelings of safety in various spaces in the city. I, I can say I really appreciate seeing the cameras on some of the waterfront locations that are not as heavily used by members of the public. Like I don't know that someone would see me if I'm going for a dusk skate. And, you know, and something were to happen to me. And I think, you know, I don't live in a state of fear all the time, but I do appreciate. And I've heard other users of the trail and trail stewards, volunteers really appreciate the use of these cameras in some locations. So I think I, I guess I'm not willing to broadly say that they're not appropriate for city use in my mind. I'd rather us talk about where they are appropriate or under what circumstances. So maybe this needs additional discussion. I'm not sure where others are sitting with it, but I just wanted to note that, you know, the public gathering spaces and centers of town are one thing. And then some of our outlying areas that are very tough to monitor are, are a different thing.
Do we have any other comments? Councilmember Moulton.
Just to say where I stand on this, I, I agree that I, I find use in certain areas more appropriate than others. I too use that trail and it can get pretty nerve wracking to think that you're just sort of completely out of sight, even if you are inside the city limits. And I do find those comforting. And seeing where some of the other ones are in, in a building that was not being used and was becoming a trouble spot. And simply putting a camera there prevented people from gathering there on public land along the waterfront. I agree, having one at the gazebo seems really aesthetically problematic for me, even if it is not super visible and right out in front. But I do wonder about where the motivation is to put one there in particular. There's nothing in this policy, of course, about exactly where cameras would be or wouldn't be, besides how they're being used. So that's just to say my policy. I'm not opposed to utilizing the digital tools at our disposal to prevent and prosecute crime in the community. And I don't think that people have an expectation of privacy when walking around in public as, as, as far as I'm concerned. Extra eyes that are recording. I have a dash cam on my car, you know, like these are, why wouldn't you? But I can appreciate the, the nuances in this policy that prevent the data from being exploited or prevent the cameras from shooting into places where, where the public eyes have no right to be and other things like that.
Any com, any more comments? Anybody? So would somebody like to make a motion or?
Actually, I do, okay.
I just, so what are the reasons that we are putting a camera in Old Town? Cause I agree, I really appreciate the trails. And people feeling safe, but, but what is the impetus to put one in the gazebo? And why the gazebo and not Maticat Plaza? Or, you know, why, why that particular location or even?
Mainly it was based on likely the previous police chief, but calls for service, like we discussed previously, we get a lot of calls for service in that area. And so it was mainly based on calls for service because of the volumes and the calls for service there. It was a discussion at department head level with EPD, Public Works, Community Services in relation to calls for service as well as maintenance. And some of the issues that we've had under. So it's not just the calls for service, but a lot of our staff time being spent on addressing maintenance issues in that area. So it was both a combination of calls for service and basically vandalism that was happening in that area.
For those areas, say for areas like the gazebo or for areas like Maticat Plaza or even near Living the Dream.
Even near Living the Dream, I'm just curious. Would those be movable? Could we, does it have to be permanent at the gazebo?
It doesn't have to be permanent. I think that these are two, we're talking about a policy and how their use is not necessarily location. I think that.
But location should be considered, don't you think?
I'm not saying it shouldn't. I just don't know if it belongs in a policy. I think that the, the reporting parameters that were put into this, I think are important so that we can demonstrate the effectiveness of them. You know, some of the areas are highly used other than, I would say that the waterfront, the location on Marina Way is very highly used. When you look at people, how many people go down there to eat lunch or use that field that's open there currently has the marine going in, but they are used in other areas that have a lot of public use, not necessarily in just clandestine areas. When we did the remote ones and we did the ones that were mobile, we put them at businesses that were very well used, whether it was the Ingamar or the library or some hotels that we use them at, they proved to be very effective to address the calls for service that were going there, the thefts and the, and the things that were going on in those locations and they were effective. So figured since this was one of the higher volume areas that we're dealing with and we're trying to help with staffing levels that we felt that this would be effective in addressing some of those staffing issues that we have.
Thanks for clarifying. All right. Councilmember Castellano.
I just have a quick question. Was it considered to only use them temporarily? Could you talk about kind of the shift from temporary to permanent?
The, the temporary was, was like a test run. It was brought in by the previous police chief to look and see if they're effectiveness. And after that was determined, it was a combination of how effective they were as well as the state of especially our public safety and as well as community services and our park staff. And how, I mean, we were down 13 officers, I believe at the time, when we went through this. Currently down 11, I believe. We're still down three parks maintenance workers. And so, so, I mean, that was a combination of those, the effectiveness and the staffing levels that we were at to make them permanent.
All right. Well, it's come to the time, you guys, where we have to decide to, to do something or actively choose to not do something.
I'll note that I think having a policy that specifies guidelines around this is a move in the right direction. We are already using security cameras throughout the city. I think we're I'm sensing that we're particularly stuck, or I'll speak for myself. I think I'm particularly stuck about location and not about the use of them broadly speaking. I don't personally have a moral objection to the use of security cameras. And I've heard from quite a lot of community members who think that they would be a good idea or what a, a good addition to certain locations. So I don't think that the perspective on it is, is universal or, or simple. But I, I, I don't object to moving forward with having a policy in place. I think your point is well taken that the locations don't belong in the policy. But then, since we're all hemming and hawing potentially about locations, that makes me think, do we need to have more of a conversation about what locations seem appropriate and parcel that out and make that a separate conversation that precedes this one? I know we do need to leave it up to staff to determine appropriate locations. But this is, this has become a big public item. So any thoughts on that?
I, I don't know what the, the vehicle would be to get there, but it could be a discussion that could be happened after that. I think that depending on the staffing levels and what we're doing at the time, the ability to monitor and the ability to address issues that we have needs some leeway for department itself, especially public safety. You know, I think it's been very, you know, clear that our public safety really appreciates this and especially in the situation that they're in now that they really, you know, there's locations, whether it's temporary or not. I mean, it, it seems to me that if there's a certain number of, I don't know what the trigger would be for a location, but if there's a certain numbers of calls for service and we just don't have the staffing to deal with that area. I would hope that there would be at least an ability to temporarily locate something there. And maybe there's not a thing for permanent locations, but let's say we move it away from the gazebo and it's not there and we have a significant issues there that, that are recurring. I think the ability to address those, we should have as many tools as possible to do so. So I don't know what the vehicle would be to dictate what locations can and can't be there. And developing the criteria for that in case another location comes up that you can make the same argument for. I think it would be challenging, but something that we could look into.
I think Leslie has.
Councilmember Castellano.
Thank you. You know, and what I'm hearing and thinking, you know, as I'm listening to everyone, is just that you know, temporary locations based on calls for service has the most logic, you know, like if there are a certain or accidents. You know, if there are certain, you know, level of calls for service or accidents, then that would be where you put one for three months or, you know, hypothetically speaking, and then you know, be able to kind of, I think that would actually be more efficient. I mean, and one of my concerns with the trail, you know, is, I mean, and I understand that, that desire for safety, you know, on, on trails and when you're alone, but kind of like, you know, there's always going to be someplace where there aren't camera. I mean, I guess you could just say like, the, these are the camera safe areas to traverse on. If you want to have that kind of, I don't know, it's, if you want to have, you know, that experience and maybe that would be a benefit to people to have an area of like a, a you know, there's a certain portion of the waterfront trail that people know is lighted and there's cameras and it's sort of the, you know, all ages, all times, all times of day or night. Safest place to walk your dog. In Eureka. Anyway, those are just some thoughts that come to mind.
I forgot to add previously on that, I apologize. One of the things with the temporary locations, if we're worried about aesthetics, and that's one of the reasons why these permanent ones went away. I don't know if you guys have seen the mobile ones. The mobile ones aesthetically are much more obtrusive and larger and have panels and have a lower end. They're, they're pretty obtrusive. There is one set up at the 4th of July next to the police booth. They're extremely obtrusive. So if it's an aesthetics issue, that's not going to address the aesthetics issue. As a matter of fact, it, it makes it worse.
Councilmember Royal.
I thought I wasn't going to have a lot to say about this one. I'm sorry, but so it goes. So I think the thing I'm getting wrapped around here is in the new provision 11, under audit and oversight, talks about any expansion of use. So expansion of use kind of indicates that we will have sideboards around what the current use is. And we, I think we all know what we're talking about here, but the policy doesn't state that. So anyway, I guess, does expansion of use mean something else?
I think that I was pretty clear in calling out the three areas in which expansion of use. I'm sorry, I lost my.
Oh, can I just give you mine?
I think it's a use, collection and sharing. And those three are actually separate numbers in the policy. And so if.
Gotcha. Authorized use.
Those are the places where expansion would come back to council. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's how the policy is written. I'm now being handed several copies of the policy.
So you're well equipped now.
I mean, it's, thank you.
So use refers to like authorized, the section that says authorized use.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yes. And I was specific in that.
Okay. Okay. So if we were to move forward with having a policy, which I think has some merits, because it says like, you shouldn't do bad with this information and it, and not to speak too lightly of it, it clearly says what it shouldn't, shouldn't be used for. Which I think is a benefit versus what we have right now, which is basically probably internal to each department. This is something more comprehensive citywide. I see a benefit in that, but it sounds like we might need to tell the city manager our thoughts on locations and types of installation, but I don't think that having a policy precludes us from doing that.
Yes, I would say that the policy is important. Like we've said before, we've had security cameras for a long time without a policy. We don't have a policy in place. And I think a policy being in place is important. And I know that there's not a legal definition difference between surveillance and, and, and security cameras, but from our perspective, there is a big difference. We will not be sitting in front of these and monitoring. And I think that's important to note. As far as the locations and, and they're I would hesitate to say that let's designate specific locations and, and say they can't be there. I would say there's certain criteria to either have them there or criteria not to have them there as opposed to a specific location. Because of, like I said, the leeway for public safety mainly to be able to use this as a tool.
Councilmember Moulton.
Are we interested in expanding the policy to include some criteria? Cause that's not in here yet, right? That's what I'm reading.
It's not in there and I welcome the guidance of the council on additions to the policy so long as they are very clear.
I'm trying to wrap my head around what that sort of criteria would actually be like. I mean, I have a, a gut reaction to cameras in certain places for purely aesthetic reasons, but I don't know how to codify that into law for that would be, or if it would be useful to try. Does anybody have an idea what that, is anybody interested in attempting that? to try. Does anybody have an idea what that? Is anybody interested in attempting that?
Councilmember Bragel.
I really don't think it's the best idea to have locations that are that where we can never have them. Um I because of the way that you know, law enforcement's been really impacted with not having, you know, support, not support, but you know, enough people and that type of thing. Um sometimes it's going to be necessary. I think what's really important is to um maybe look at criteria for why it would be there. So perhaps it's this many police call, if we were going to do this. Uh how many police calls or what would be the determination that something would go in? And if it was permanent, could it be reevaluated over time if that were to change, if the area had changed?
So to take the existing criteria that we're being told is how the decision decision is already being made and just codify that? Is that what you're, just to clarify what you're saying? What, cause what I'm hearing is is that it's about calls for service already. And you're saying just kind of take that and write it into the policy that there needs to be a threshold of call for ser- calls for service?
I don't know what that would be, what that threshold would be, would be the issue.
Like, how do you get?
I I just these weren't haphazardly put to where they were put in. They were, they were tested in these locations. They were determined to be successful. Um I think council's talked a lot about aesthetics. Um if we're looking at mobile locations, um these aesthetically are are a lot, you know, less, I don't, if it is about aesthetics, maybe criteria on on, you know, going to some sort of how you fit the area or something like that. Um you know, I'll go back to, you know, when we have staffing issues like we had in the past. And we didn't have this as an option. We went and spent money on a security guard and had a security guard in locations in Old Town and not as a human being walking around doing more of a surveillance type of thing as opposed to a security camera. So um I think it would be difficult that staff is more than willing to take council's direction on how to determine a more location criteria. It seems to me, and I'm going to be honest, that it's just anywhere but the gazebo is what it's sounding like right now. And um I don't know if that's where we want to go. Um but it's up to council's direction.
Is there, Councilmember Royal first and then Councilmember Bragel?
I hear that some of the concerns are aesthetic and I uh hearing Councilmember Castellano speak, I think it was eloquently put about um I I guess my concerns about the gazebo or any public gathering space are more about those being gathering spaces where you don't want to deter people from um exercising exercising their, you know, First Amendment rights and um feeling comfortable and that there's no reason not to be there doing doing that activity. Whether or not we are using security camera footage for picking, you know, which we are not, for picking out people who seem like they're opposed to certain policies we have or whatever it is. Um you know, even though we are not doing that, I can see how surveillance you know, security cameras being in use and signage saying that would make people feel perhaps less likely to use those public spaces. And that is a gathering space for, you know, I I, when I think about that area, I think about the problems being like the bathroom and like the the actually the the not gathering space. Um you know, some of the um shadier locations that are like shadier as in tree shady that are a little tucked away, um you know, potentially harder to see um on an ongoing basis, that kind of thing. So I don't know that, you know, my my concerns aren't so much aesthetic as they are about discouraging people from using spaces in that way. Um that said, I think we're all talking about like, what's the rationale? And so I would suggest perhaps in um section eleven B saying that the report will include use, number, placement rationale and effectiveness of the security cameras. So we put this one in this location for this reason. Therefore, we get a public report about that annually at a public meeting. Um and therefore we're kind of checking that box. I mean, it's going to be after the fact, so we won't get a chance to weigh in on their placement beforehand, but um that would at least disclose why we would have a camera in a specific location and it might be call for service, it might be number of wrecks, it might be a variety of different things, but I think that could perhaps help us find a middle ground.
That change, would that change be, I don't remember what the word is.
Substantive?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I would leave that to City Attorney Luna. If they were to add rationale into that, would you think it would be substantive? Change?
I'm I'm not sure what you're asking. I think that's a change that could be made here today and the policy could be adopted with that change so long as it was clear that the policy was being adopted with that change, if that's what you mean by substantive.
That was what I meant, was if we make that change, could we move forward tonight? All right. Councilmember Bragel.
I'll second with that change.
Oh, did you already? She did make a motion. Would you like to make that motion, Councilmember Royal?
I thought she made the motion.
I I didn't. I I'm now infamous at this point for doing that where I'm like, here's all the things that should be in the motion, but I'm not going to make it yet. I think it was because I wa- I I understand that we're in different places with this and I wanted to thoughts to be shared.
Um okay, Councilmember Moulton.
I just wanted to I just wanted to address the concern around free speech, um which is totally valid. I definitely get that feeling, um having felt uh persecuted before for standing up to power in certain situations. Um but I just found out that most of the protests that happen in Eureka happen on the lawn of the courthouse. Definitely surveilled. Uh and I don't think that it's that anything, anyone's being deterred from going out there and practicing their right to free speech.
And I I will also say, I think that City Attorney Luna put it very well. We have policies and procedures and and all of these things in our personnel rules and regulations that if those things are being deterring First Amendment rights, there's, there's things in place in order to address that and it's not the camera that's going to dictate whether that does and does not happen.
So I think we could, we could talk about this forever by always remembering something, but it'd be really nice if we could we can make a motion tonight.
All right, I'll do it.
Okay.
I was trying to make it less onerous for staff later while onerous tonight. Um so I think we've gotten to a point where I feel like that's the case. Um I move approval of the policy with the change of uh rationale for use being added to eleven B. As one of the things that will be in annual reporting.
And I'll second that. And I do want to say that just quickly is that the the Old Town or not the Old, the gazebo location, it is the aesthetics that bothers me most. Um and I I would hope that we can really be mindful of that as we go in. Um it seems like as was mentioned, that the bathrooms are a serious problem, um that costs the city a lot of money. Um and so perhaps we can locate the camera that way.
All right, let's vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
No.
Three yes votes, Councilmember Castellano dissenting, Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
Thanks very much. I appreciate that you guys really work these things, so I really do. And and next we are on to future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they would like to add? I probably should note too that we're going to have a couple of meetings that we're missing and one in August and one in September, so.
When's the one in September that we're missing?
The League of Cities is the first meeting in September after.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So, all right, I don't see any future agenda items. I'm going to move on to city manager report. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Um I just wanted to give a quick update on some of the housing projects that have been before you. Um we went through the last two, three month period working with Servitas and um some other partners dealing with the Earth Center and um trying to hash out uh a predevelopment agreement and thanks to City Attorney Luna and um our Finance Director Merlar. We've come to a conclusion of that and we have signed the predevelopment agreement. Um now we're waiting on hearing back for the transit authority that will help to pay for a portion of the building, which will be the intermodal transit facility. So um it was supposed to come back in June. Um we haven't heard yet. I was hoping that before this meeting we would have heard, but um we should hear very soon about that. Once that's in place, um I'll everything's going to be start moving forward, the design and um we'll start looking at that point to follow up on council's direction to create more density and look for more partners to that's good news. Um also, the um Link Project um just submitted their um multiple uh multiple, multifamily housing grant. There's a supernova that went out, which is a combination of grant funding as well as um um loan and they put in an application today for sixteen point four million dollars. Um it cover basically a lot of the components that were in the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant. Um that was submitted um today by mail and it's officially due on the eighteenth, I believe. But anyway, that was submitted and we should hear back from that in December. If that is successful, then it'll be all forward for the Scattered Site Project, which is the Eighth and G property, the Sixth and M property. And then last on the list is the Danko Project. If anybody drives by Seventh and Myrtle, it's well underway. They're starting to form up for the um foundation. Um it will be a long process. I was more optimistic in my conversations likely won't be until um a year from now, but we're hoping by summer of next year that um there'll be people living in that development there. So um just wanted to give council update on all those projects. And that's all that I have unless you guys have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? All right, thanks for the updates. I am sad that it's not as expedient as it was when we talked earlier. Oh, it takes a long time to build housing, guys. Way too long. Um all right, we will move on then to our council reports and we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Castellano.
Um I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it short tonight, so I'm I'm a little under the weather, which is why I'm at home, but uh uh just wishing you all a good evening. Um as Elizabeth stated, um on the twenty-third, July twenty-third, there's a Disability Pride event. And I I I've been, I didn't get to make it out really too much to the July four things, but I, oh, I just want to appreciate Amanda um from Main Street, you know, I just, she worked so hard on the July fourth event, so um thank you to her. And it was really neat to, to just know how much Main Street was also getting support from the city and putting on that event. So thanks to all of the city staff and and folks involved. Um there you go.
Thank you, Leslie, and I know you're under the weather, so if you wanted to just leave the meeting now, I think we would be okay. Okay, you're gonna wait? Good job. All right, Councilmember Bragel.
Thank you. So I have been spending the last couple of weeks with my kids and I'm really enjoying that. So uh as far as city business, I haven't been doing very much, but um I'm grateful for the time I have with my kids. Couple of things, uh se- or excuse me, this coming Saturday is zucchini at the Sequoia Park Zoo. So um that's something to attend. I wanted to just recognize, this is so funny, but I'm going to do it, is um our own friend, Public Comenter Stephen Parr, I just want to recognize him and thank him for working with Pack Out Green Team uh on the last cleanup. You know, I think that's important to if you're going to, you know, come and talk about things that you get involved, pick up an oar and start paddling. Uh cause we need to all work together to make things better uh here in our region. Uh and then I did go to the um Fourth of July Festival and it was just so fabulous to see so many community members having fun. And you know, it was a mix of all different people and um I would just really encourage people to spend time in Old Town. Because you know, there wasn't a lot of notice, you know, I hear often about how there's, it's so scary to be in Old Town and there's just this homeless population that just makes it so horrible down there to even be there. Um but you know, when there are a lot of people down there, it really makes a huge impact and a difference. Um and just being kind while you're doing that is a real important thing. And I just want to remind everybody something very important. And that is that we have twenty-nine thousand people in our region and if, in our city, and if everybody did one that would be twenty-nine thousand kind things in a day and that's exponential. We have a choice. We can be kind or we can be divisive and um I would encourage you to make the kind choice.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Royal.
I've had a busy couple of weeks. Um finally kind of able to attend, attend more things, it feels like. Um so the Eureka um Chamber meeting was was casual and um I, yeah, felt um very collegial and uh was really nice to check in with them. Um we met with them right before they announced their new director. Um so that was exciting news. Um and it seems like they're they're continuing to head in a great direction. Um I went to the Veterans Hall um event with Councilmember Castellano also. We went to see the masons do their ceremonial um cornerstone laying ceremony. It was really interesting to see them in full regalia and um participate in that event. What a beautiful facility. Oh my gosh, the Veterans Hall is incredible and I hadn't had a chance to really look at all the details they did, so um just such a beautiful space. I encourage people to use that for community events. Um I attended Ferndale Pride. It was really celebratory and fun. Um I went to the ribbon cutting for the project, uh really exciting, thrilled to be moving forward with that one and excited that tonight we um announced a little bit for the revegetation. Uh well, we we decided on consent, but I'm glad to see all of that is moving forward. Um I went to a meeting that was interesting to think through um the EIFD um currently on the Samoa Peninsula, but potential to expand um and use that to support housing projects um in the, in the county and and in Eureka potentially. So um that was helpful to talk through with with some county personnel um and others and um I attended the I saw um Captain Stevens, shout out to Captain Stevens for being at every single event. Um just there making sure everybody is safe and everything's going well, so um and I bought a um, an old house to restore and uh not because I am selfishly interested in this for for my benefit, but because I think of many people who might want to lovingly restore um a somewhat decrepit historic home. Um decrepit's the wrong word, but um in need of a lot of love. To turn those places that are sitting vacant right now into into utilized housing again, I I do really hope that as a city, we can find more tools to help people do that. Um because I now am the proud owner of a three units that are nowhere near livable. So um I'm going to be on a long journey to make those livable spaces that are used again um for housing in our community and there are tons and tons of places throughout our city that are just not in good enough shape to be suitable housing. They might be being lived in, but um you know, this place that I bought um absolutely can't be lived in yet. So um I I will be doing that work and I hope that other people, you know, I I think as we've seen an infusion of people buying new property in our community and folks selling property, I'm hopeful turnaround, but I hope as a city, we can also find more tools to help folks make those um renovations a reality. And uh that is it for me.
Thank you very much. And I just want to reiterate, Captain Stevens is everywhere. You're not even kidding. Every event. It is so nice to see there. Councilmember Moulton.
Hi, thank you. Uh I just got back from a month-long road trip um where I went to my hometown of Houston. Uh and that was um, you know, delightful and stressful and interesting and um, you know, really fascinating. Uh I'm very happy to be back in nice, cool, foggy Humboldt County and here in Eureka. Uh and back home again, it's always good to, it's always good to go travel and it's always good to come back. Um and I just have uh one really cool thing that happened while I was on the road is that the uh the the Kamisu Sister City Project sent off their first batch of, uh, pen pal letters to Kamisu. Uh, and those are going to, from school kids at Alder Grove Charter School over to school kids in Kamisu. And they actually did some, um, letters between teachers as well. And I believe the responses should be coming back this month. So we're actually getting a, a give and take and a real cultural exchange on the student level. Uh, there's other great projects that are sort of in the percolation stage, uh, to help build that cultural connection between Eureka and Kamisu. And I'll tell you more come to fruition. Um, I went to, uh, Arts Alive, of course, which it was delightful and fun. And, um, it was really great to see how businesses are using the street closures. One business had a band, um, set up in the street in front of their business, sort of on a, on an end where people might not necessarily have walked down there, but folks were coming down because there was, um, calypso music playing. And next thing you know, that business was putting displays outside and they're doing demonstrations. And they were using that to really engage the, the public that were out there. Even though it was raining, uh, there were still people dancing and, um, definitely buying things. Um, and lots of kids playing in the bubbles coming out of many hands galleries. That was really fun. DJs playing, skateboarding happening, live art happening, all in the street. Um, and people being able to like spread out around, it just felt so safe and so vibrant. And I, I heard the concerns from the community about, um, it feeling more like a festival where people wouldn't go into the business. And I, what I'm seeing is that the businesses are spilling out onto the sidewalk and inviting the people in. And that's what it looks like to me on the ground. So, um, that I think is just really super, was great to see. Um, couple of things coming up, the South Eureka Neighborhood Alliance is throwing a neighborhood block party in Highland Park. Uh, that'll be July the 16th from 12 to two. They're gonna be barbecuing burgers and dogs and, uh, plant-based burgers and dogs and beverages and things. And neighbors are encouraged to come out and play games and, uh, bring a dish to share if you like. I'll be out there. And the other thing I just wanted to, uh, let people know about that I think is just really cool is that the teen council has a survey out right now for teens and young adults, and I think it's still open. I just, uh, I just checked the deadline and now I can't remember what it was. But if you are, um, a teen or a transitional age young adult living in Eureka, um, to gain a better understanding, this is from them, to gain a better understanding of how local youth currently live, learn, work and play in our community and what could be improved or implemented to provide a higher quality of life in the city. As somebody who moved to Eureka on purpose in my early twenties, because I saw this as a vibrant community with a lot of really great opportunities, I want everybody who grows up here to feel the same way about this place. And hopefully that's what the youth council's working on. So you can go to surveymonkey.com/r/eurica youth or there's probably a link to that somewhere that's easier to get to than that. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And with that, I am going to adjourn the meeting. See y'all in a couple of weeks.
Bye, Leslie. Feel better.